Call the meeting into order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the May 21st Post Falls City Council meeting. We did start the meeting with a workshop on a part master plan that we'll hear some more information on later. I will note that our council members are present. And under ceremonies, announcement and appointments, we do have a couple announcements. There will be a Memorial Day ceremony at Evergreen Cemetery on Monday, May 27th at 10:00 a.m. The ceremony is to honor fallen servicemen and women and all who serve or have served this country. Memorial Day is Monday, May 27th, City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed. The Police Department will be open for walking emergencies. There will be no trash pickup on Memorial Day. Following the Memorial Day holiday, trash pickup will be one day late and to normal pickup schedule on the following and back to normal pickup schedule on the following Monday. And then in the press release today, it was announced that the Idaho officials have accepted a land donation in northern Idaho where the state plans to build a fourth state veterans home. The Idaho Land Board voted five to zero Tuesday to accept the seven acres in Post Falls from Jacklin Land Company. The Idaho Division of Veterans Services plans to build a $43 million, 64-bed veterans home at this site. The U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs would cover 28 million of the costs through federal grant, through a federal grant, with the Idaho Division of Veterans Services paying the remaining 15 million. Officials say construction could start in 2020 if the federal grant is approved. State officials say there's a high demand for the veterans home with more than 17,000 veterans in the area. And that's huge progress because when the Jacklins announced their donation of the land several years ago, it was a, the veterans home itself was approved by the state legislature unanimously, but there was no funds appropriated for it. So that was taken care of this year. And then we heard that through additional funding at the national level that the opportunity to build this home earlier than originally anticipated may come, become a reality. So it's a huge movement forward. And again, can't say enough about the generosity of the Jacklin family and the land they donate. And hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we'll see this construction begin on this facility for our veterans. And we, first item up under presentations is KMPO's presentation on Railroad Quiet Zones Policy and Critical Arterial Corridor Policy. Name for the record when you come up, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ally Moreno, and I am the Transportation Planner for the Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization in Coeur d'Alene. So I have been asked to come and present to you on a couple of policies that our board just adopted at this last, at this month's last board meeting on May 9th. And just to start off, I just really want to thank the City of Post Falls staff, as well as Mr. Borders, who is on our board. They were, you know, very active in getting these policies put together and adopted. And so we just really appreciate their time and the work that they've done on these. So to start off, I just wanted to give a brief overview of kind of how we got to this point. These two kind of topic areas were just, had been, we had been discussing it a lot. They had come in front of KCAT several times, so we had, which is our technical committee of all of the agencies that are also on our board. So we created some subcommittees within KCAT for those that were interested in the topics or would be impacted. We had some meetings where we discussed some concerns, as well as what would be included. And then we brought these to the committee as a whole, who then recommended it to our board. And they, as I said, adopted those at our board meeting on May 9th. So the first policy I want to talk about this evening is our Critical Arterial Corridors Policy. And this really kind of stems from the impacts that we're seeing from increased development in the region. So the purpose is just to provide regional guidance on the identification and establishment of access control points and treatments onto regional arterials. As I said, the increased development and the number of access requests is kind of what spurred this conversation, as well as just making sure we're preserving regionally significant facilities to ensure safe and efficient movement of goods and people, as well as protecting the long-term integrity and investment we're making into our transportation facilities. So for a roadway to be designated as a Critical Arterial Corridor, it has to meet these four requirements. So it has to be on the federally functional classification system as either a principal or minor arterial or major collector. And it has to connect to either a state or national highway on one or both ends. It has to cross multiple jurisdictions and serve in the same capacity across those jurisdictions. It also has to either be planned and/or designed for, or operate at 35 miles per hour or faster. And also, it needs to be capable of achieving access control of signals, major stops, or, you know, just cross-traffic movements at half-mile spacing. And that's similar to what is kind of being done with the Highway 41 widening. Those signals will be spaced far enough so that it is considered one of these critical arterials. So once these arterials are designated, they exhibit some attributes that the jurisdictions then can work to maintain these going forward. So that's, again, limiting the access within a half-mile spacing. Controlled accesses will be designed to achieve the purpose and the need of the corridor. The access to and from developing properties is to be taken using existing roads that then access the Critical Arterial at the half-mile requirement, or a new road can be constructed in order to meet that requirement. If a large, high-traffic development does not have access at that half-mile spacing, there can be temporary access considered until the infrastructure is completed. But there, at that point, needs to be, or would be an agreement between the developer and the transportation authority that outlines how that temporary access will then be revised to that permanent half-mile spacing, as well as how that temporary access will not impede the nature of the arterial. Additionally, new access points that meet the half-mile spacing that are needed as growth and development occurs, but are not part of the city's arterial system, will be funded as a condition of development. And so one thing I do want to point out, because I know that there has been discussion about this, we're not trying to restrict access overall, but we're trying to encourage the use of the baggage roads that parallel those roadways in order to keep traffic flowing, limiting congestion, as well as it increases the safety for all users, whether those are, you know, motor vehicle users, as well as pedestrians or bicyclists. Because the more access points you have, the more opportunity you have for those conflicts, especially on higher-speed roadways. So another major part of this policy is our notification of potential development. And this is really kind of a checklist that we've established to work as a tool to start the conversation between developers and transportation agencies, as well as other agencies that may be impacted by the development. So this would be in advance of a formal development application. And so that would include kind of, the checklist includes three steps. So it'd be kind of a scoping of the proposed project with agency staff and the developer to determine the relationship between that development and a Critical Arterial Corridor. It would also be the time where staff would let the developer know what the attribute, attributes and expectations of that corridor are. And they would also present the developer with a list of agencies that have an interest, review, or approval authority on that roadway. And those, the proposer of that development would be responsible in contacting those agencies. And that's really just to start the conversation earlier, rather than us, you know, someone getting a development in there and then trying to meet with the local authority, and they're saying, "Well, the amount of traffic that you're going to be creating is gonna, you know, require a signal at this location, and that's, you know, not going to, you know, being in line with these corridors, as well as, you know, impeding traffic, creating safety issues," and that sort of thing. And so this is just a map of the designated corridors that were adopted within the policy. So you can see, and that includes Highway 41, Ramsey Road, Prairie Avenue, Hayden Avenue, Lancaster, Meyer, Hutter, is part of Atlas, and then Pleasant View as well. And there is an upper portion of Greens Ferry that we are working on including as well, once we continue having some conversations with the City of Rathdrom on that. So that is just a brief overview of that policy. And so then I want to just get into our Quiet, Railroad Quiet Zone Policy. So just for those of you who may not know, or who may be watching this meeting, I just wanted to get a little, give a little information on what a Quiet Zone is. So these are basically whistle bans, or the elimination of the train whistle at crossings. And these were used for decades, but were regulated by local and state governments. But back in the eighties, the Federal Railroad Administration found that in these quieted crossing areas, especially at night, the rate of accidents were skyrocketing. And so at that point, Congress then started working on what was published as the 2006 Trainhorn Rule, which requires that all train whistles be sounded at railroad crossings, at grade crossings. However, Quiet Zones may still be established, but they have to be done so, following the standards that were outlined in this Trainhorn Rule. And most of the time, or all the time, those crossings have to either fall below a specified level of risk. So that's calculated, you know, based on the number of traffic and those sorts of things. Or specific safety measures must be installed before the FRA will approve that as a Quiet Zone. So again, the purpose is just to establish some regional guidance on how these zones are established, as well as identify some potential locations that would be good to pursue. The need really came out of the increased growth and development we're seeing along area rail corridors. Obviously, the more people you get living next to them, the more conflict people are going to have with trains. We have two major railroads, the BNSF and UPRR, running through Cootney County. So at the upper portion of the county, we have 50-plus grade crossings, and they see approximately 70 trains a day with both of those railroads. And we also know that BNSF is planning to expand their rail line, which is the potential for even more train traffic. So this only, this helps to maintain the safety and quality of life for residents, as well as we're trying to ensure that these zones are established in a fiscally responsible manner. So the conditions for establishment that were outlined in the policy were, we'd really like to see these established on the main line due to the amount of train traffic. The spur lines definitely have considerably less. Required improvements should be funded by alternative mechanisms, such as grants or taxing districts. At this time, there's no specific funding mechanism specifically for the establishment of Quiet Zones. It's seen more as a quality-of-life improvement, rather than a safety improvement, because train whistles provide that safety measure, is how it's seen. Interested agencies or groups other than the city or highway district that has authority over that crossing, if they're interested in establishing a Quiet Zone, they may be required to provide funding for the establishment and maintenance of that zone. And where safety improvements are warranted, all crossing components shall be brought up to current standards. So if you have a crossing with old gates that don't meet new regulations, or that sort of things, those would also need to be updated at the time that those improvements were made. Considerations for establishing a Quiet Zone. This was really just looking at where are the best places, where are those priority locations going to be? And so the things that our subcommittee considered was density of residential development, really primarily suburban land uses within a quarter-mile of the railroad tracks. The impact of horns on commercial or residential activity. The number of crossings with, in a Quiet Zone, are you looking at one crossing or six? Condition of the crossing infrastructure, again, what's going to need upgraded? Are there already gates established, that sort of thing? Planned projects for proposed crossings, so down the road, is there going to be a grade separation built? And then additionally, available funding for the construction and annual maintenance. So I just wanted to show a couple pictures, and these aren't great, because the area's big, the dots are small. But if you can see them, there are, the yellow crossing points are gated crossings. Orange are just grade crossings with a stop sign. And then there's some little black boxes that represent the grade separations currently in existence. This shows planned projects coming down the line. A lot of this has to, relates with our Bridging the Valley study that we did about 15 years ago with the City of Spokane as well. And so this shows on BNSF, part of that study was to eliminate all grade crossings and provide grade-separated crossings. So you can see there's a grade separation, I don't know if I can use this thing. Yeah, right here. A Pleasant View. That is in our program right now for 2025, for an interchange to be constructed there with a grade-separated crossing, and both of the crossings at Prairie and Maguire would be closed. There's a grade crossing, separated grade crossing at Highway 41, which will be constructed with the widening of 41. So those are just examples of projects coming down the line that will eliminate the train horn. We're just working on funding those. It takes time. So additionally, in the policy, we also identified priority Quiet Zones. So we currently have one Quiet Zone in Cootney County, which is located at Mill Street in Rathdrom, right in their downtown district. So we want to make it a priority to maintain that as a Quiet Zone due to the economic benefits that it has for the city. And then the subcommittee also identified a Quiet Zone between Maguire Road to Idaho Road along the UPRR through Post Falls. And as you could see on this last slide, that area right here has the densest residential development. So really focusing on providing relief to those people living in that area. So we also, part of this policy, put together just an information guide, which just compiles information on kind of the establishment process, the different types of safety measures, the, more information on those priority locations. And it, it just tried to be, we tried to make it a user-friendly format for the public, as well as decision-makers, so they had a place to go to, to kind of get that basic information if they wanted to start that conversation. So this is just an idea of some of the treatments that would be needed for the establishment of a Quiet Zone. You have a road closure and a grade separation, which would eliminate the train horn, as well as those train and vehicle conflicts. You have a four-quadrant gate system, a one-way gate system with two gates, or making sure that the gate crosses the full width of the roadway, adding a median to a two quad gate, or yes, a two quad gate. And then some non-motorized crossing treatments. And just to give you an example, for a four-quadrant gate, kind of our conservative estimate on the current cost of constructing one of those is right around $900,000. So adding a two quad gate on some of those crossings that have no infrastructure right now, you would also need to include a median, would be around $800,000. So we just wanted to be able to show that, you know, transportation agencies aren't against these Quiet Zones or making these improvements, but it is a very costly endeavor. And so just where can we find the money to make these improvements, as well as maintaining these down the road in order to keep these Quiet Zones established? So again, this is just a map of where that priority Quiet Zone would be, from Maguire to Idaho. And we have, most of these crossings are already gated. So we are thinking that the cost would be minimal compared to what could be needed, but it's still a great expense. So this is without the breakdown of engineering and specific updates that would need to be made. And this includes the grade separation at Poline that's included in Post Falls' transportation plan. So you're looking at about 8.8 million for the establishment of this Quiet Zone. And we discuss in the guide that, you know, potentially this could be done in two phases, you know, chase to Idaho Road and then wait for that grade separation at Poline, or putting in a different treatment at Poline for the short term, as the city acquires funding for a grade separation in that location. So there are options, but we just really wanted to show the costs. And we worked hard with ITD, as well as, you know, the subcommittee members, to determine what are the actual costs that they're seeing for some of these improvements. And the City of Post Falls has made several safety improvements, even in this corridor of the last couple of years. And so we just wanted to show an accurate picture of what that cost is. So I'm sorry, that was a little bit longer than I intended, but does anyone have any immediate questions?
Ally, I do. So you're talking, you just said the City of Post Falls, and when the funds are available, the City of Post Falls. So if gated crossings are put in, is that at the city's expense? Or is that the railroad's expense? Who pays for that?
It would be the city. Yes.
But would have to have railroad approval?
Yes. So the railroad has the last say on anything that is constructed within their right-of-way. But it comes at the jurisdiction's expense. I don't fully know, haven't had a lot of experience with the politics of that, but I know that's how it goes, so.
No politics dealing with the railroad.
So who establishes the Quiet Zone?
So in the case of this priority Quiet Zone, most of those crossing locations are, Post Falls has jurisdictional authority over those.
City of Post Falls.
The City of Post Falls. And I believe, correct me, Rob, if I'm wrong, but Idaho Road and Maguire? Or just Idaho Road? Just Idaho Road is Post Falls' Highway District. So if they were, if you guys were to pursue, you know, from Maguire to Idaho, or that sort of thing, collaboration with Post Falls' Highway District would be needed.
I have another, when I was looking at the list there, I couldn't quite read the numbers, but it was over 100,000. For Spokane Street, that was done. That was done in the last year.
Yes.
So that has now the...
So it has the gates, and it has all of the upgraded equipment. But one of the requirements to avoid any, you know, a car doesn't obviously hear the train, and so the gates are down, they don't want the car just driving around it without looking. So you're required to include a median or some sort of channelization device so that people can't drive around the gates. And that's what, that's the treatment that the City of Rathdrom has within their Quiet Zone.
So they didn't do that when they just did this in the last year?
No.
Wow.
And that, again, Rob, you could correct me if I'm incorrect. So those funds were specific, that were used to update that, were specifically for just safety improvements. So these specific Quiet Zone improvements don't fall under that. And so that could not be funded with the funding that the City of Post Falls received for improving that crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for the information. I know that's becoming an issue, and so your presentation was timely. The costs are surprising, but I understand anymore, so. But again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
And we have an introduction to make of our new environmental specialists.
Mayor, council members, Craig Morpul, Utilities Manager. And I'm excited tonight to introduce you to Alyssa Giersdorf, our new environmental specialist for the Utilities Division. She comes to us with public and private experience, and a master's in hydrogeology. So well qualified for the position. We're excited to put her to work.
Welcome, Alyssa.
I'll just say hi real quick. Nice to meet you guys, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I do understand we're going to have an amendment coming forth tonight to the agenda?
Isn't it an amendment?
I think it is.
Consent calendar?
Yeah, if we have to move it, yes.
Oh, well, I would, I would move that the item E of the consent calendar be moved to new business, just for some clarity.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Chairman, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Are there any, any other amendments? Any declarations of conflict tonight? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the May 7th, 2019 City Council meeting. Item B is payables April 30th through May 13th, 2019. Item C is memorandum of understanding between the Post Falls Police Department and Spokane County for a license plate reader project. Item D is Hope Avenue and Bogey Drive Extension Phase II Construction Improvement Agreement. Item E has been moved to new business. Item F is Peregrine Place First Edition Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item G is Idaho Street to Bay Street Pedestrian Access Bid Award. Item H is 2019 Asphalt Besalt Chip Seal and Fog Seal Placement Bid Award. And that's it.
I do have a question.
Chief?
I have one question on item G on the Idaho to Bay Street bid. I noticed under traffic control, there was a discrepancy between the engineer's estimate of 60,000, and then the bid's second bidder was 36,000, the lowest bidder was 22, and that's $14,000 difference. I know those are pretty high-impact interchanges there between Idaho Street with the freeway. Is that, do they feel that's going to be enough money to control the traffic there? Will they be coming back for a change order at some time? That kind of concerns me, that's so much lower than the bidder and the engineer's estimate.
Councilman Anthony Robert Pauls, Assistant City Engineer, did talk with our consultant on that, and they felt that that was reasonable numbers within there for what they were looking at. Within the plans, there was a laid-out traffic control plan, which they can follow, or they can provide an alternate way to go about it. There is room in the area to do some different types of traffic control, keep traffic in there, and protect the workers without causing a safety hazard.
Okay, after, during the project, that's what you're going to hear the most about, if traffic's backed up, or if it's not moving smoothly, so.
Correct. This is a 25-day project window, so it's, from a construction standpoint, pretty quick to get in there and get the project done.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob. Any other questions? Not entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and tonight we do have one Title 18A text amendment. Mr. Manley? With that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here with the City of Post Falls, introducing the Title 18A Proposed Text Amendment, File Number TA22019. So the applicant is the Planning Division within the community. So the applicant is the Planning Division within the community development, and what we're seeking is to assure that non-residential uses be constructed along Spokane Street and also modify how lot coverages may be calculated within Title 18A. But before I go into the details of the proposal, I kind of want to give a brief overview of kind of why it's being requested at this point. So in 2005, we had the city center plan. And on this plan, the key element of this was how do we get commercial uses, non-residential uses, on Spokane Street? And what are the complementary uses that are nearby to support that future hopeful mixed-use district? After 2005, and to try to meet those needs, Post Falls adopted Smart Code. So Smart Code has more of that purplish patterns going from lighter purple to darker purple. And Smart Code is a mixed zoning, form-based zoning district that does assist in meeting those needs. And you can see it goes from Idaho to the river to as far south as First Avenue to I-90. Pictures taken out of that city center plan kind of painted what an ideal setting would be. You don't see big, tall, six-, eight-story structures. You don't see single-story structures. You see, you know, some potential two-, three-story structures. And that is what's tailored for what you see here with the SC5 and the SC4 zones are, you know, a minimum of two stories, a maximum of four. Three, SC4 caps out at three, SC5 caps out at four stories. So that's in line with that envisioned built environment outcome. So currently, within SC5, it is allowed to do a single-use building, either all office, all commercial, or all residential. And so in the spirit of preserving Spokane Street and still allowing some commercial and office-type uses, by disallowing non-residential or just mandating it has to be non-residential would help facilitate this vision. So therefore, you see 18A, 2070 building configuration for SC5 and SC6 specifically that, this is actually handling two things. The proposed language that's being stricken actually created more of an ADA accessibility issue, having it required to be two feet for residential or lodging functions, kind of flew in the face of ADA. So by striking that and then replacing it with this language for Spokane Street to construct non-residential uses along lots with frontage on Spokane Street. Within the city center plan, and now I'm going to move towards the lot coverage discussion, you can see how it was envisioned that opposed to like typical auto-centric type development where you have your street, your big parking lot in the building and back, you changed the philosophy where the structures are along the street with your parking in the rear. Also, you can kind of see that typically with auto-centric, auto-oriented development, you actually get less buildable square footage, and you encourage more vertical construction with reduced parking in your, in a more downtown setting. And all of which is to attain the envisioned building setting. So in the code under 182110, what's being proposed is to remove the impervial surface to be counted as part of the ratio of lot coverage. The reason for that is what we're finding the way architects and developers are looking at the code, as you build more square footage and increasing the parking requirements for the parkings for that development, that it's acting as a deterrent because once you get your building, your asphalt, and your stormwater, that if they can't, if they actually add more parking stalls because they're going vertical, well, then now they're adding and they're creeping into that lot coverage because the impervious surface has added in the net sum. So you're discouraging development that may be greater than two stories because of the impervious surface being included. So that's why that part is being stricken, but then having the additional term definition within Smart Code that it would be the percentage of total lot area of the building to the lot So how does this affect the SC3 and SC4 and SC5 zones if by that definition? So you look at the SC3, which is very similar to an R1 zoning district, and the lot coverage at 50% max. Currently, the R1 is about a 40% max, but the R1 has a 60-foot-wide minimum lot width on it. Here you have your SC3 a 50-foot minimum lot width, and you would see an increase in demand in that lot coverage because if you have a narrower lot, if you want the same house and the same garage as your neighbor, you would need to have probably a higher limit on that lot coverage. Plus, with the current 40% in Title 18, they don't count impervious surface. So by changing it to as being proposed, it'd be playing the same game as R1 with the SC3. Looking at the SC3 and SC5, the lot coverage is 70% for the SC4 and 80% for the SC5, but you are getting towards more of that urban environment or desired outcome. And you would, if you could get, really the three big items are structure, parking, and swell. So if you can meet all three of those in the code, this lot coverage becomes more or less this odd game in the mix. These were the agencies that were notified of this proposal, both the Cootney County Fire and the Post Falls Police Department. They responded as being neutral on the proposal. So I'd stand for questions you have about this amendment.
Any questions for John? Linda?
John, I just want to be clear. So if you go back to the pictures of the three-story buildings, if a person were to, say, purchase a lot down on Spokane Street and they did some sort of retailer commercial on the first floor, and they only want to build a two-story building, so probably going to go SC4, could they build commercial on the main level and residential on the second story?
Yeah, really what we're concerned about is that first floor, that first story. So you could put non-residential in the rear, like parking, or up on the second story. It's just confronting the street itself would need to be a non-residential use.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be, two stories could be in both the SC4 and SC5.
Al? John, I got a couple of questions for you on this one. Understand where you're going with this. What about a situation where they put the parking at ground level and put the residential above it? Does that, it's non-residential, but it's a residential building?
Well, if the parking is allowed in the zoning district, if it was commercial dedicated parking, I guess there could be an argument that it was commercial parking, and then you'd have residential on the second, but the likelihood of someone putting in parking on the main, not associated to the residential on the second story would be pretty rare.
Okay, so you feel like that covers that, that the fact that parking isn't considered commercial?
Plus, in the parking, Smart Code requires a parking in the second or third tier, so you couldn't put parking in the first layer either against the main corridor.
Okay. Next question. Do you feel comfortable that where it's, you state that's specific to zones SC5 and SC6? Because when I read this, it says frontage on Spokane Street, but it doesn't really restrict, you know, Spokane Street goes along ways. If you go back there, so, I mean, pardon me?
North of the freeway?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would affect the Smart Code zones.
Only those Smart Code zones.
Correct.
So you don't have to feel like you need to define that from the highway to the river or something like that?
None at this point in time.
Okay.
I think if we looked at district planning north, that would be the time to look at what kind of policy we'd want to place north of I-90, but being of the fact that this would be just dealing with south of 90 to First Avenue.
Okay. Because that's where those SC5 and SC, there is no SC6, is there?
No, but someone could make a zone change to an SC6, and if that was approved, then this would cover that.
Okay, good. Got it. Joe?
I kind of have a similar or the same question essentially as Alan, but it doesn't specify anywhere specifically that this would does not or shall not apply north of the freeway. So what if somebody comes in with a zone change that's not Smart Code along Spokane Street, south of the freeway? Would this then apply? So say somebody comes in, somehow successfully gets a zone change to R3. Then where is it specified that since it's south of the freeway and north of the river that you can't have residential on the bottom? Or if somebody gets a zone change to Smart Code north of the freeway, which I don't anticipate happening either, then would that then apply to that property north of the freeway?
Theoretically, if they got a zone change on Spokane Street north of I-90, that this would apply as it's written.
Regardless of what zone it's changed to?
It would have to change to the SC5 or SC6.
Okay. So this, so where does it specifically state this only applies to the SC?
Right above.
Maybe Warren, if you want to chime in.
More specific to SC5?
Yeah, so we've made it specific to SC5, FC6, SC6, so that those would be the only zones this would apply to. So if somebody on Spokane Street north of the freeway wanted to change it to SC5 or SC6, this would come along with the package? I think the odds of that happening are...
Miniscule.
Pretty remote.
Thanks for putting up with my ignorance.
Oh, that questions are good.
Chief?
John, have you gotten any comments from any of the property owners along Spokane Street on this?
Uh, no, I have not.
Any other questions for John at this point? Thanks, John.
Right, thank you.
And I neglected to announce that if anybody does wish to testify, there are forms in the back, and since I didn't announce, do you have any forms?
I have none.
Anybody that does wish to testify on this? With that, I will close the public hearing. Council, how would you like that?
Move to approve the Title 18A text amendment?
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, John. Next item up tonight is unfinished business, the Black Bay Park Vision Plan, draft plan presentation. Mr. Myers?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, once again, bringing up the topic of Black Bay master plan. And with us tonight, Scott Jordan with Civitas is going to present a brief version of what we saw earlier today in the workshop for the viewing public, so.
Thank you. Scotty, introduce you, but would you give us your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Scott Jordan. I'm a landscape architect with a firm called Civitas out of Denver, and we've been working on the Black Bay Park Vision Plan. And I will emphasize that we instill the word "vision" because we really think that as we create these master plans for parks, we need to establish a vision that the community can build themselves around and take that vision and move forward with it. It needs to be highly flexible, yet specific enough to know where it's going as a master plan. But really, it's been developed over the last six months, working with the community members at a couple of different community meetings, a series of stakeholder committee meetings, and steering committee meetings, where we develop this vision that we hope council will find is appealing to the community for where Black Bay Park can go in the future as it moves forward. So as we begin any design process, we go through a series of discovery and analysis. We're really trying to learn what is it about this specific park, this specific place that's unique? What's unique about the community? And how do we take those values and instill it in a design or a vision for the park space? And so as we began Black Bay Park, because the overall park's master plan hadn't been completed, we really started looking at system-wide, what all existing open spaces do you have? What river-based parks do you have with Falls Park, Camelen Park, and Black Bay Park? How can we make each unique and different? How do we take Black Bay Park and give it a different experience than what you've already got throughout the community? What makes Black Bay unique? Well, it's really an interesting geologic formation that was created thousands of years ago. And if you look at the image on the left, the kind of magenta, purple color, that's the Nice and granite formations that was formed geomorphically by tectonic uplift. And what that's caused is really shallow soils, therefore, there's not a lot of growing medium. And if you look at how it cuts through, and I'll try to draw with my left hand on the mouse, how it cuts through Black Bay Park, it really divides the site into two-thirds. One third is more native soils, the other third is a lot harder rock formations. What that's created is this really a duality of a place. Two-thirds of the park on the western half is really dense rock with shallow soils, really tall trees, lichen and moss. It's a really beautiful natural area that we need to look at preserving and enhancing, whereas the eastern half is an area that's been highly disturbed. It's got a bit more soil profile. It's an area where maybe we consider activating the park a little bit further as an amenity. As we get into design, we talked about this earlier, but we really try to establish design principles that we developed with the community to establish what are the key ideas that we want to solve through this park design, and we test any of these design ideas against these to make sure we're trying to achieve that. We might have some really cool ideas, but if they don't achieve these principles, they're not specific to this park, and therefore, we use these as really critical parts of it. As I mentioned earlier, we want to preserve the existing qualities that you have in this park while enhancing those. We don't want it just to be a natural park that nobody knows about. We want to bring people into the park and enhance those experiences. We want to place the park in motion. We want to get people moving throughout the park, so they're running into their neighbors, running into other community members, beginning conversations, really creating a sense of community through the park and moving through the park system. We want to activate it without overpowering it. It's a really beautiful natural system you have today. We want more people to use it. What was really interesting to me is some of our early community meetings, we heard from a lot of community members that they thought the park was just the ball fields that are at the front of the park, and that you had these other 60 acres behind that are these amazing natural systems. People weren't even aware of that. I think that's a problem. We really want the community to come out, use this place, but we also don't want to overpower that beautiful quality that nature has in the core of your downtown. And we want to make this a park for everyone of all ages, of all ability, mobility capabilities. We want it to be a place that everybody can create meaning for, so that way they come back over and over again, and it becomes a part of the daily experience with as many Post Falls residents as possible. And we want to engage the bay. You have the Spokane River and the Black Bay right there. It's an amazing natural resource. Coming from Colorado, we don't have these beautiful systems that you have here. How can we bring people down to the water's edge and let them engage with the river in a way that's safe? Right now, it's a fairly steep, cut-off edge to the water. How do we engage it in a way that makes it more accommodating to people? As we created the, began to think about the vision, we created a series of frameworks for which helped to shape the way we viewed the landscape. We wanted to talk about how do we create program for the park? How do we make it so that people come down, they move through the space, they have fun, they learn about ecology, they discover different spaces, they gather, and they really create friendships on the park? How can we make this a place that people have an emotional response to, that they want to come back to over and over again? We did a series of outreach efforts, and one of them was asking the people, the community, what they wanted to see in their park space. And the two key things we learned here was that a lot of people were just looking for the core, basic amenities in the park: restrooms, benches, tables and chairs, shade shelters, things that are common throughout most of your park system that Black Bay doesn't have a lot of. They're just looking for that core level of service. But then we also saw that people wanted a diversity of uses. They wanted it to be able to be used in many different ways by many different types of people. And so how do you begin to activate the park? As I had mentioned, the eastern half is an area that has some activating features in it. How do we add additional amenities to that? So basically, you draw people down the eastern side, all the way down to the river's edge. And then how do you create unique spaces in the natural corridor on the western half that draw people through that space? So again, it's getting people to move throughout the entire park, not just one area or another. And when it comes to movement, how do we create ADA-accessible paths throughout the park system, but also use different types of trails from paved to asphalt, or paved and asphalt trails, to soft-surface trails that allows people of all different abilities to move throughout the park in a series of different loops? Therefore, you can kind of chart your own course through the park and do different levels of activity with what you're comfortable with. And then how do we create placemaking in the park? How do we create known areas where you go to to get different experiences? Especially in the natural areas, there's a lot of really beautiful amenities that people don't even realize are there, and as you walk through, you discover, well, how can we create little seating areas or placemaking areas that draw people there and let them sit and just enjoy the natural beauty of what the park exists, particularly on the western half? that draw people there and let them sit and just enjoy the natural beauty of what the, the park exists, particularly on the western half? And so with the vision, what we really tried to look at doing was a couple of key things. We wanted to bring users down to the river's edge and try to activate it, and I'm going to flip hands because I will butcher this with my left hand, really activate the lake edge, or sorry, the river's edge with a boardwalk and a series of open space systems. How can we engage the bay and, and really stop a lot of the erosion that's been going on? I think Black Bay has a history of eroding problems, the city's done a lot to try to mitigate that, some of them are working, some are not. How can we actually, through the design of this, create a better river's edge that allows the riparian system to restore and reestablish itself there? Create a series of loops throughout the park and throughout the natural areas, creating a series of rest areas? And then how can we possibly consider getting parking out of the core of the park and make that a park experience with lawns and shade pavilions? And move it up in front of the, the park and rec facility along Third Street? So really, you create your arrival sequence up at Third and enter into the park, into a natural system. As we thought about this vision, we thought a lot about the materiality, and what are the natural types of materials that can really fit into this really beautiful piece of nature that you have right near your downtown in Post Falls? As you think about the park design, what's the signage strategy to enable people to understand they're arriving at a special place? Both from a vehicle standpoint, a pedestrian standpoint, and also a boating standpoint? One of the things that we were proposing is potentially some community docks on the western half of, of the boardwalk to allow people that use the regional system of the, the Spokane River to come to and use this park space. So how do we welcome them there? How do we create placemaking signage to allow people to understand where they're at within the park? And then also wayfinding is, is a big issue right now. There's a lot of great trails through there, but if you're not familiar with it, I remember the first time I came and toured with Brian, after about an hour, I didn't know where we were in the park. I could have been anywhere in that sixty-six acres. How can we create a system so people know where they're at and, and understand where they're at within the system through signage and wayfinding? Again, what is the materiality? It's, it's more leaning towards natural materials, stuff that's a little bit more rustic, kind of national parks-like quality, but maybe slightly elevated detail to that? How do we let natural systems like the rock outcroppings form the edge of lake walks and boardwalks so that you're not blowing up nature, you're actually working around it for once, rather than going through and plowing through it and engineering a solution through it? And so as we thought about the vision, one of the things we talked a lot about is how do we phase this project? It's a big, potentially a big change to this area of the community. How do we phase it in such a way that during Phase One, you get the things you need? You get circulation through the park, you get rest areas, you get access to like the river's edge, you add a restroom, and you create this new parking arrival sequence through it. Some of these graphics are really just visual ways of saying, you know, in the natural areas, it could be as simple as just adding benches and a trail through an area just to create a bit more of an amenity. When we get into Phase Two, how can we reclaim the bay and really look at getting rid of the erosive qualities, reestablish the lawn space, and potentially the overlook that faces down onto the bay in this area right here? How can that become a children's play area? That's one thing you don't currently have in the park. There's ball, basketball courts and tennis courts, but there's not really areas for children to come down and engage in this park. How can this phase of the park add that to it? You know, what does it look like if it is on that edge? One of the things we, we think is quite amazing is it's quite a, a unique overlook that faces into the park. Can we create kind of a tree fort structure of a play feature that allows kids to get up and get a different experience of Black Bay that they don't have currently? And the third phase is really about completing the river edge. How can we create a boardwalk system and overlooks that not only allows you to get access down to the water's edge, but also creates a way to mitigate the wave action that's currently eroding the edge of the, of Black Bay Park? And really allow that to reestablish itself as a riparian corridor? And then again, how do we further supplement those placemaking areas throughout the natural areas with a few small amenities that get added in? Again, it's trying to build upon what started in Phase One and make it more and more compelling and more and more full of experiences so everybody can draw meaning from the park. And then finally, in Phase Four, it's, it's really about reclaiming that core of the park. Get, getting the parking lot that currently exists in the core of the park out of that area and really reclaiming this as a series of open spaces that can be community gathering areas, some shade structures, restrooms, creating a bit of a natural play area up on the bluff. And then one other big movement here is the idea of creating a connection from the Centennial Trail as it crosses Third right into the park. Currently, you kind of skirt around the edge, you go through the parking lot, and you go through kind of an urban system to get into the park. Why can't you ride across onto a bridge, such as what's represented here in this image, and enter into nature rather than going through these hardscaped areas that are a part of kind of circulation systems? And then what does nature play look like? One of the things that, as I said, it's a beautiful natural system as a park space. A lot of what we're seeing throughout the country is these nature-based play experiences. It's what we all grew up doing, playing on rocks, logs, playing in the creek. How can we create play areas that encourage kids to get creative with how they play with natural features as a way of engaging a very naturalized park system, or park right in the core of your downtown? And then finally, what's the big vision? This is, you know, a, a graphic representation of what could be achieved. It's a bold vision. It was something that when we talked with the community, we initially showed three alternatives. Each one got a little bit more and more bold, and we were, we were trying to push the limits and see where the community would say, that's too much, we don't want that. I don't know whether we actually hit that limit with the community, they kept saying, no, we, we want long-term, this is the vision we want. So this image represents what the vision could potentially be. One of the big questions you get when you establish a bold vision like this is what does it cost? And obviously, it's a little higher than what was initially conceived of when we first started the project. That was based entirely on community feedback. As I said, we tried to establish phases that made a great park experience from Phase One and got added to it. Each of the components within these phases could be moved around. Overall, it's about fourteen million dollars estimate. This is a highly conservative estimate where we have a fifteen percent contingency attached to that dollar amount. Again, it could raise and lower depending on when it gets constructed and what gets constructed. And the other thing we want to make sure everybody's aware of is that it's not just the early capital costs, which are the big ticket item, there's ongoing operation and maintenance costs that we need to be aware of. And in a park like this, it's quite unique, it, it probably has two-thirds of it being natural systems. If you look at the National Recreation and Park Association, they estimate it's about sixty-seven hundred dollars per acre to maintain a park. If you apply that to the sixty-six acres of Black Bay, that's about four hundred thousand dollars annually. We all know, and I think Parks Department here knows, that's not the actual cost. If you take two-thirds of the park and say it's only about a thousand dollars an acre, and it's really just these areas that we're adding amenities to that we need to have a, a, a maintenance level of this, that number comes down dramatically, but it's just something to be aware of as we move forward towards realizing this vision. There's going to be long-going, ongoing costs that need to be thought of in addition to the capital improvement costs at, at the time of design. And so with that, I will turn it over to the Council for questions.
Well, we all had a chance to ask questions earlier. Any additional questions now, Scott? We are going to, I am going to ask for a motion and, and the, what we need to do is accept the plan as presented, is that correct, Mr. Wilson? It's that action item.
I think tonight, this is just a presentation to the Council and televised so that the audience and the folks at home can hear it. I think it's, can you go back through the process and come back for adoption through the Parks Commission?
Agenda calls it an action item, I just want to make sure.
We list it as an, as an action item, so that if you chose to take action, you could do that at this time, without putting that on there on the agenda. We have no ability. So if you want to provide direction one way or the other, we're, we're open for that.
Thanks, Brian. Anybody want to make a motion this time or wait till it comes back?
I'd rather wait till it comes back.
Okay, I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is change order for Black Bay Depot parking lot subgrade.
Mayor, Council, I'm before you tonight doing something I do not like doing, and fortunately, I have rarely had to do that. But I'm here asking you to accept a change order for the subgrade at the parking lot of the old senior thrift store, and that's the Black Bay Depot. We did enter into a contract with VCR Land Services. As they started opening up, we're going to do about forty percent where the islands would go, we ran into a few, a few problems. Major one is when that parking lot was built, it was just laid on top of topsoil, so it wasn't built, built to standards even then. But for us to bring it to our current standards, we need to go down about two feet, lay fabric, and build up some, a substructure for it so that we can have pavement done. Unfortunately, that additional cost is sixty-seven thousand dollars, it's going to have to come out of impact fees. And I'm open to questions, you know, I wish we didn't have to do this, but-
Questions for Dave.
What's an island?
Yes.
You said island.
Originally, we were putting in our parking islands to meet the shade requirements and some of the drainage in there. So that's why about forty percent, we looked at what was the worst-looking part of the parking lot. So as that was opened up, we also had a sewer line that had failed, so we had to put a new one in there.
Al?
Dave, I'm just kind of curious about when we originally bought that property, you came to us and said, this is about what it's going to cost to fix it all up. And I'm not talking about the parking lot in specific tonight, but how close are we to that? That number that we, when we agreed to buy this property, how close are we?
We had looked at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as that cost to fix the insides and get it up to code. We're probably, at this point, our estimates are a hundred and eighty-six, we're looking at how we cut back. We've already gone, looked at the lights, we're going to put in LED lights, so we're keeping the existing lights.
So we're not too far off the original estimate?
Not too far off of that, we did, but we did have to make some changes, that's why those lights aren't going to change, is we found out that the, the heating and cooling in there was actually just heating, the cooling wasn't there. And then the airflow bit, so we're having all of that redone.
That inspection.
We made some adjustments on some of the windows and stuff to pull that back. Electrical, only part of it was to code, so there's things there that we've had to make those changes. So we pulled back, so that part of it, not too bad. Parking lot, until we got into it, we just didn't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, the way I see it, we really don't have a lot of other options, Dube, because it's all torn up now. There is no-
There is, well, our option is if we don't accept this, we have to go out and get quotes. And that becomes a little bit of a challenge, because on the last time, we only had one company that was, you know, that came back with a quote. So most likely, they will come back with a quote again, but right now, because we're, with this, we shut that down, they're actually doing work on the parking lot next to the chamber, so they're doing work for the city. So we're not going to get hit with mobilization costs. If we have to go out, they're going to go on to other jobs and we'll be paying a mobilization. Also, they have a contract to do about forty percent of the first foot, so then you're going to layer something under it. So is there a clean way to do it? No.
Any other comments?
Don't bite the bullet.
Counselors like to act, we do need action on this one.
Move to approve the change order for Black Bay Depot parking lot subgrade.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks, thanks, John.
Thank you, and it will be a nice-looking parking lot.
Better be.
Yeah.
Next item up is citizens' issues, and this is, section of the agenda is reserved for, Andrew's excited.
He's ready.
The section of the agenda is reserved for anybody wishing to address the Council on a non-agend item. Anyone does, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
All right, my name is Gene O'Finley. This is a paper from a few weeks ago from a concerned citizen talking about how there's a forty-three home development being planned next to her subdivision on roughly three acres. And had some rather unkind things to say about the mayor and the Planning and Zoning Committee about that. But I wanted to come here and just thank the mayor, whom I disagree with sometimes, and the Planning and Zoning Committee for zoning for all people and not just those that can afford to live in R-one residential areas. First of all, these are townhomes and tiny homes, they fit the comprehensive plan's standard for R-one homes. And I, I don't understand, there, there's a misconception going around that if you have higher-density areas population, you automatically have higher crime, and I don't understand what that is. We need areas of higher density in our city in order to achieve a lot of the goals we have listed in our comprehensive plan. Goals like increasing pedestrian traffic or increasing the efficiency of our public transit. You cannot, if you look on some city council planning websites, you can't have those things unless you have high-density areas. And unless you want Post Falls to become essentially a bedroom community, you have to zone areas that accommodate people with lower incomes. People like me who are just starting out, who are trying to find a career, who might still be in service, in the service industry or in retail, they need, they also need to have a place to live. And if you want, you know, that beautiful downtown area that we were shown earlier to, to work, you, you, it's going to have a lot of retail shops in there, you'll need places for those people who work there to live. And so I just, I just want to remind the Council that the loudest voices are not always the only voices. And that even though there is a large contingent of our citizenry who doesn't necessarily want the growth they're seeing, a lot of it is necessary. And maybe we need to review how we zone. I would like to see, as the author of the article says, it would be great to have shops in residential areas. I think mixed zoning, even upzoning are, are, are great solutions in our future. I, I would love to see more population density, because as you probably know, they're talking about developing Mineral Ridge and Coeur d'Alene because they've run out of space and they're not willing to upzone. And unless we want to have the same thing happen to us in Post Falls with our beautiful mountain areas, we will need to learn to conserve space within our city limits now. So I just, just want to thank the Planning and Zoning Committee, who aren't here unfortunately, and the mayor for just zoning for all people and not just, not just those who make the loudest noise sometimes. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. And just for clarification, the mayor hasn't voted on an issue in six years, so just wanted to get that out there.
But you'll take the credit.
So you're welcome.
I, I won't take the credit, but I, I do catch the blame, and that's fine, so that's fine. Thank you very much. Chief?
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. Warren, Mayor, for the record, I just wanted to thank a couple of people here for, we had a Second Harvest giveaway. Councilmember Wilhelm for coming down and helping out for a couple hours last week in the Post Falls Police Department. We provided food for a hundred and eighty-one families, three hundred and forty-three of the count. At the end of the day, we also shared a thousand pounds with the Senior Center, they'll be using that for Meals on Wheels. And we say, and we also shared about thirty-five hundred pounds with, with the Post Falls Food Bank. So a great partnership, and we thank everybody for coming down. We hope to do another one in the fall.
Appreciate your efforts on that, very successful. Anyone else? Seeing then, I think we have someone that wants to come forward. New, under new business, additional engineering services agreement with TO Engineers for Highway Forty-One Sewer Line.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council, Andrew Arbeany, Utilities Project Manager. Just patiently waiting my turn. So I'll start out by just mentioning that there are two items listed under new business, A and B, and they are separate items, but they are both included in this presentation tonight, as they both pertain to the Highway Forty-One project. This is a map that you have probably seen multiple times. The project limits of this is Horse Haven down to Twelfth Avenue along the east side of Highway Forty-One. This is constructing the new gravity sewer as part of the Northeast Quadrant Study, and then ultimately funded by the URA. So the first additional services is for the sewer design pertaining to the sewer design itself. A brief history on this, this has been a pretty fast-moving project. Once the Northeast Quadrant Study was approved and we started moving forward with design, we met with TO Engineers last year to begin our scoping, and I would say that we know a lot more now than we did at the time. We, TO scoped in some unknowns as, as well as they could at that time, knowing that there was coordination with ITD, there was coordination with many other entities. And we had two designs essentially going at the same time, our sewer design and ITD, Idaho Transportation Department, designing the highway widening. There's been some challenges and things that have come up in that process. So this is an example of one of the unknowns that have been identified in the course of the design. This additional sewer design was originally part of the Twelfth Avenue List Station project, which is one of the three URA projects. This work was to be included as part of that project, which will be constructed next year, twenty-twenty, about the same time as ITD widens the highway. In order to be completely out of their way, outside of any paving limits, out of the right-of-way, it- it, it's made a lot of sense in our, in the course of design to include this future work that would have been part of Twelfth Avenue in our Highway Forty-One project. So this additional services allows TO to survey, to design, and then construction oversight of about a thousand feet, additional feet of sewer line, and then adding six new manholes. So this is a simple illustration I put together, because I like pictures. The green represents what was originally scoped by TO engineers. So that was the original ending point, that, that green circle representing a manhole. The red represents everything that is included in the additional services. So that's the additional pipe that we are extending out, which would bring us beyond I T D's right-of-way, which is essentially between the green line and the existing list station that you can see on the screen. That puts us, again, outside of the, the paving limits. And then the second bottom red line is a gravity line that runs to the west. There's been some considerable coordination between the engineering firms, two different engineering firms, one for Highway Forty-One and one for Twelfth Avenue. So we were able to sit down and, and address what those needs are, and what the design firm for Twelfth Avenue needed, and this is the, this is the result. The second additional services is for a drain field that was identified in our design. TO used I T D's base map, which included their, the utilities that they had surveyed, identified, and their roadway design. Non-included in I T D's plans was a drain field that's been located or identified at the Chateau property. TO and actually city staff had identified that, knowing that it was, that property is on a drain field, and looking at the wide-open area of the field, that, that would probably be a great place for a drain field. And as it turns out, it is. So the issue has come up that our sewer design, you can see the green line runs right through that red box, which is the location of the existing drain field. It's also located within I T D's right-of-way, which presents an issue. We've started coordination between I T D, Panhandle Health, and the city to determine how we address that. There's, it's not as simple as relocating the drain field, which isn't simple. There's some other factors that come in, and that's where Panhandle Health have, have been involved as of recent. For continued coordination to determine that solution of how we address this, if it's just a relocation or, or another avenue, this additional services allows TO to coordinate those efforts between all entities involved. The breakdown, the financial side of this, the additional services for the gravity sewer is for twenty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-five dollars. The additional services, two A, which I should have mentioned earlier, this is contract two A, so this provides for the coordination for the drain field. Once we identify a solution and a path forward, we will come back with, in additional services with TO, to provide the design and construction management oversight for the actual solution. So currently, this is just for the coordination, and this is for nine-thousand, five-hundred dollars. So the total amount tonight is, being requested, is thirty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-five dollars. This is being paid out of the collection budget line item for the project, to be reimbursed by U R A. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Well, nice thing is, at least in the first part, that's not cost overrun or increase in cost, but rather additional services that would, have taken place down the road. So that is, is nice to see instead of a cost overrun. Counsel, any comments?
You know what? You're the cheapest guy tonight. We saw a fourteen-million-dollar park and a sixty-seven-thousand-dollar parking lot, so...
Why do you think he was so anxious to get up here?
Good job, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
I'd move to approve the additional engineering services agreement with TO engineers for Highway Forty-One sewer line and the relocation of the Chateau drain field.
I'll still second it.
Thank you. Motion second, and Warren, that will work to do both at once. Thank you. Roll call, uh, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agendas are ordinances and resolutions, and tonight, we do have one...
We have the item E that was moved...
Oh, I'm sorry, we forgot. We didn't move.
My item. My item.
You told me, and I forgot. I apologize. So this is the item that was moved down from the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council, Bill Melvin, city engineer. Did you want me to move forward and present this item as it is in the consent agenda, or were there specific questions that you would like me to do?
Counselor Wolf had some questions. If you would, partially, my, my two biggest questions were, one, I couldn't even read the request for waiver, and then, two, there was disagreement between planning and engineering on whether or not the waiver should be approved. So my question is, number one, what is the waiver request? And then, number two, if you could help explain why planning was okay with it and you weren't.
Correct. A lot of what you saw was some administrative stuff, paperwork that typically isn't sent forward, that, that got into the packet, was moved forward, that's why it was hard to read a lot of that information. So somebody's about, doing a development at six-oh-nine East Mullen between, that's, is between Idaho and Spokane Street, specifically just west of Breckert Street, within there. So somebody does the development, they typically are required to do their frontage improvements, curb, curb gutter, sidewalk, infill paving on those developments. There is sidewalked immediately to the east of this project, in which, in which if we were to build, they could possibly tie into, because we're doing a, a study that'll be coming up this fall, looking at Seltice and Mullen Avenue. The actual width of Mullen is kind of undetermined, what that future width is going to be. It really didn't make sense to build those improvements at this time. So, so in a lot of those cases, we'll, if, if it doesn't make sense to build them at this time, we have cashed them out if we know that we have a future project coming, so those dollars could then be included in, into a future project to complete and widen all of Mullen Avenue. The, when we go through those waiver requests, there's, it circulated through the department. This one went to planning first, it came to then engineering. We conferred after we had, had put forward our comments on that, we're in agreement that our recommendation is the same, that the improvement should not be constructed at this time, but the, whoever's developing that property should cash out those dollars so we can put them into the project. So we did confer after we got those comments, and just to make sure that we were all in agreement with that. I think what you were seeing was something that was kind of administratively, that we, we always flesh out, if there's a, a difference in there, we'll sit down and confer before it comes to you. So that's, is probably why you saw a little bit of difference with me, but we, we spoke before, came before you, and we spoke again this morning.
Okay.
And just to make sure that we were on the same page with that.
So did the, did the landowner not want to cash out?
No, the landowner...
What were they asking for?
The landowner was requesting a complete waiver of their responsibility for those improvements.
Okay. So you're saying you're not going to waive at all?
Our, our recommendation is not to waive those improvements, to have them, actually cash them out, so we can put them in the right location once we have moved forward and done some design work in the future.
You okay, Al?
I'm good.
Any other comments or questions on that? Not an entertaining motion.
Move to approve the frontage improvement waiver with a cash out for six-oh-nine East Mullen.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now, I was as anxious as Mr. Arbeany. Ordinances, tonight, Selkirk Zone Change.
Move to place the ordinance, Selkirk Zone Change, file number R Z N E dash zero-zero-zero-eight dash two-zero-one-eight, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in Section One of this ordinance, from limited commercial to high-density multifamily residential, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section One are hereby superseded, providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, Selkirk Zone Change, R Z N E dash zero-zero-zero-eight dash zero, or dash two-zero-one-eight, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up is the administrative and staff reports, and we have a couple updates. First, Maplewood, Ross Point Road.
Yeah, mayor and council, several weeks ago, we mentioned that the developer was, was moving forward, trying to get Maplewood and Ross Point paved by the end of last week. The utility companies were in there, able to move their shallow utilities, and they actually completed that paving last Wednesday. There's a little bit of striping they'll have to do, there'll be some minor road closing for that, but those, the issues and concerns that were occurring for the neighborhood should be addressed by now with the paving and road closures up ahead.
I think it was our meeting, probably three or four months ago, when we discussed this project, we talked about the access onto Maplewood from that development. At that time, we thought the public wouldn't be able to use that access, it would only be emergency access, but in talking to you, it will be available to...
We, we have opened it up, yeah.
It'll be opened up to the public, so that traffic can exit that development onto Maplewood and the inner it, so.
Yes.
So that should help Ross.
That'll help. It won't be as wide as, as the other, but yeah.
Yeah, I think that'll help for the people that live on Ross Point. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next update is on the Seltice-Mullen signals update. Mr. Paulus?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Robert Paulus, assistant city engineer. Just under two weeks ago, the third of the three traffic signals that were being built with the Seltice congestion mitigation project, the Mullen and Spokane Street signal, was energized. When that was initially turned on, there were some computer issues with the signal and that we had a, two pedestrian push buttons which were making constant calls as if pedestrians were there, constantly pressing to wanting to cross the street. Some minor adjustments were, were made, and a couple of push buttons were salvaged from the City of Coeur d'Alene to try to aid us through. After those were put in, it was found that the computer problem was more extensive than that, and the system is still operating on a, you know, kind of jerry-rigged internally while the new parts are on their way. We're anticipating new parts to show up in about the second week of June, and at that same time, we're anticipating that the manufacturer of the computer equipment will be there and putting in a new computer server, which will be here at City Hall, which will coordinate and get all of the traffic signals that we've installed, plus the traffic signals that I T D currently owns on Spokane Street to all talk to each other. At that time, they will be making some adjustments and, to the programming, to work more efficiently, and then they will be monitoring that for a period of time of thirty to sixty days. They'll come back and make finer tweaks to it, and at that time, city staff will get some training as to how to make further adjustments in the future. Right now, the system is working adequately. I wouldn't say it's the greatest system in the world, but when we get coordination in it, will, it will improve. I have talked with the Transportation Department of the Post Falls School District, and they like the fact that we do have that traffic signal there and working even in its current state. It helps them a little bit with their buses getting in and out of, over there, improves access for the school, and more importantly, it provides safer access for pedestrians in that area getting to the school as well as the Post Falls library.
Any questions, Rob?
That's my zone. I, I travel through that, and I think that overall, the light is, for all of those reasons, is going to be a good thing, but right now, it's incredibly frustrating because it's not synced with Seltice. So whether you're going north or south, but particularly south, you'll get cars queued up, you come through on Mullen, boom, it's a red light, and you're queued up again. So in, what'd you say?
About three...
Couple of months?
Well, about three, about three weeks, when they put in the computer system and they get it online.
Yeah.
That first week, the company is going to be making initial changes to the programming so that it's going to work as efficiently as they can at that time. They will then be recording the data as to where the traffic's coming from, where is it going, and they will be able to, part of it, they'll be able to make some remote tweaks from down in Colorado on the system.
I'll be for my car.
And then they will come back at the end of their initial phase, which is about thirty to sixty days out, and then make final tweaks, and then turn the system over to us after we have some training.
I'll be patient, but I will tell you, the biggest value of that Mullen stoplight is the crosswalk. So even though there's some frustration, and there will be, you know, we have to sit for another thirty seconds, for a light, I don't know how many times, and I say, for thirty years, I've been using that, that street, but I don't know how many times that people have nearly been hit because other cars don't see just because you've stopped, but yeah, that, so the crosswalk, the lighted crosswalk is...
Overall, this project is for improving capacity and reducing congestion in the area, but one of the biggest side impacts is the safety at that intersection. That is one of our more dangerous intersections in the city.
I don't think it's already achieved that.
Rob, kind of interesting note, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I spoke to six different periods of government classes at Post Falls High School, it was probably a total of ten or eleven classes, and every session asked me what all the lights in that mitigation project were for. So the youth are paying attention to it, so that, that's good news as well.
Good news.
Yeah. Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the update. Mayor comments, I was unable to attend, but Dave, I've heard nothing but kudos for you, Teresa, and everyone else who worked so diligently on downtown for a day. I heard it was a great success.
Very good.
Actually, editor of the Coeur d'Alene Press, Mike Patrick, was visiting with me and told me that he heard nothing but good things, so for a first-time event, well done. And again, thanks for everybody's effort. I know that there were a lot of hours put in to get that ready, and again, we appreciate your efforts. Also, it is seven-twenty-five. If you haven't voted, you have another thirty-five minutes. I was number four today when I voted, so not a whole, I don't expect a big turnout, but if you haven't voted and you have time, go vote. Hiltz comments?
I was number five at eleven-thirty in Precinct Twenty-four. Wow. Saturday at Evergreen Cemetery, correct me if I'm wrong, if I've been given the wrong information, in advance of the Memorial Day ceremony at Evergreen Cemetery, on Saturday morning at nine o'clock, the public is welcome to volunteer to clean out the holes that the PVC pipe goes in, that the big flags go in on probably over six-hundred graves, so American Legion Post one forty-three. There's always, people are always saying, "What can I do? These are not little flags, you're not putting little flags." These are big flags, about six-hundred. So it's a wonderful opportunity. The last couple of years, the, the public has come out, you know, where you've had families come out.